Good evening and welcome to our special meeting for August 29th. If we could, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First part is delegations. Mostly just staff and attorneys here. So is there anyone from the public that would like to address us? Okay, if not, I'm gonna go through a presentation and if what I'll do is I'll go up to the podium and cover it there. As of right now, I may need assistance in that. Good evening and for, you know, for obviously for the last year and a half plus, we've been talking about trying to come up with an opportunity to take advantage of purchaseability for Hathaway Farms. And last August, the property was actually in September, the property was purchased by the East Lime Land Trust. And they had put up as collateral several pieces of property in Azawagachi Hills and on Brainard Road. And we're gonna talk about that here in just a minute. And they had some trouble being able to come up with the funds to make the mortgage payments. So an opportunity came for us to be able to purchase Hathaway Farms, the Azawagachi Hills property that they placed up for collateral and for Brainard Road. It didn't work. There we go. Let you do it, Kevin. Okay, here are the properties we have being offered to purchase. Hathaway Farms, which is approximately 114 acres. Azawagachi Hills, 119.6 acres. There's a few more acres in there, but there's a conservation and easement on that. So that is really not considered as part of the purchase because of that easement. And Brainard Road, which is 22.2 acres. Next slide, Kevin. Did you skip? No, no, that's all right. That's good. Back to you with Hathaway Farms. It's located in the northwest corner of Patagonia Lake, approximately 114 acres. Is this the one I sent? This is because I have a different slide one. Okay. No, I know it's there. I thought I had this in there. Okay, but actually it's approximately 114 acres that were being offered. And the East Lime Land Trust purchased Hathaway, the farms from Hathaway Farms LLC for approximately 2.3 million on September of 2022. Looking at the timeframe here, back in June of 2021, the entire parcel, at first it was thought to be over 150 acres. When they finally had a survey done, which would have been completed right around February of 2022, which was after we had gotten involved in looking to possibly purchase it, it was determined to be 138 acres, purchased by Hathaway Farms from the Hathaway Farms family for $1,050,000. In April of 2022, 9.9 acres, and we'll look at that in just a minute, of prime waterfront real estate was sold by Hathaway Farms in a private sale for 649,000. Then on September 12th of 2022, 6.6 lakefront acres were transferred from Hathaway Farms LLC to Portside Holdings and English Harbor Capital Partners. It's a related entity to Hathaway Farms LLC and there's no purchase price indicated. And here again, on September 29th, the remaining 122 acres were sold to East Lime Land Trust by Hathaway Farms for 2.3 million. The caveat was in the purchase agreement regarding vision to give Hathaway Farms back 12.65 acres, leaving approximately 114 acres. Next slide. This is what in the plan of conservation development, we've always said, or the plan has said, the number one priority for open space was Hathaway Farms. This is the entire Hathaway Farms back prior to 2000, to the sale to, back to the land trust or the sale of private land trust. This is what was identified. Next slide. This is what we'd be purchasing. If you'll notice, in the southeast corner, all the area right on the lakefront is gone. The 10 acre, 9.9 acres for a private sale, which the people that bought that are going to put a conservation easement on so it can't be developed. And then there's roughly 6.6 acres to the top of that, above that area, which are back to Portside Holdings and English Harbor and Hathaway Farms LLC for future development. So there is a possibility that that will be developed. And you can see the area sort of in the center, the northern part of the property, right in the center. That's for the Hathaway family. That was cut off for them. And then on the northwestern area, there's roughly about six point or there's some acreage there for the sale and development there. And that's one of the caveats here. That was part of that caveat, that it would revert back to Hathaway Farms LLC after the purchase by the land trust. So that is not part of what we'd be getting. What we would be getting is all the property that isn't covered by the little X's. Any questions? Well, we'll do that after the end. Moving on, property two be Azawagachi Hills. Specified parcels were conveyed to the East Lime Land Trust in 2002-2000 timeframe to be preserved as open space. Parcel A, which if you look at the next slide that you have, or a couple slides down. Oh, it's right there. In yellow is the area we're talking about there. You can see the letter A on one. It's in the top left at the top north. That is deed restricted. That's a property given to the land trust by Mr. Peck, Norm Peck Jr. And that states that has to be preserved as open space. So that not cannot be developed. Parcel B, that's the big, large area. You can go, you can go back to that. You can go back to that one. Parcel B is the largest part there. It's about 88 plus acres. That was donated by the Mitchells to the land trust. It says on the, if you look at the card for the property, it says open space, but there's nothing that states that it has to be preserved as open space as it was with parcel A. So it's not specified as being preserved as open space in the details of the transaction. But due to the ravines, lots of ledge and that, difficult to develop due to the topography according to the appraiser we've had. Parcel C, which you'll see is to the left up there. That's the one right on Damon Heights. It comes off of that. There's a conservation easement in there. So again, that cannot be developed according to our appraiser. So that was not even figured in the landing here. Parcels D, E, and F, because they're landlocked, they have no access, would not be developable according to our appraiser. Next slide or actually back up. Yeah. One of the things what makes Azawagachi Hills such, so it's such a desirable piece for us to get, to obtain is currently there are numerous hiking trails in use in Azawagachi Hills Nature Preserve, including parcel B, numerous trails up there. If you've hiked Azawagachi Hills, you've hiked on this parcel. It's picturesque, beautiful, but really not developable and something we'd like to maintain. And the Azawagachi Hills Nature Preserve Management Plan states that nature preserve is to be used for the benefit enjoyment for the people of the state of Connecticut and the general public. And the uses and management practices of the management preserve, which there is a management, you know, successor nature preserve management plan, which land trust is a signature too, says the uses and management practices, the management preserve will be those which will not compromise a natural, historical, aesthetic, watershed, or biological significance of the property, which is why we're very interested in making sure this stays as open space. And even if it can't be developed, we want to make sure it's something our residents and visitors to town will have access to and enjoy. And here again, this property was used as collateral by the land trust to secure the Hathaway Farms property. Moving on to the next slide, Brainard Road property. It's one parcel of land, approximately 22 acres. It was deeded to the land trust for open space in 2022. Here again, it was deeded for open space, but nothing in the document says it has to be maintained for open space. And here again, this properly, property was used as collateral by the land trust to secure Hathaway Farms LLC property. And currently there are numerous trails accessible from Brainard Road, Giant's Neck Beach and Giant's Neck Heights for the property. Next slide. This is the slide of where that is in red. The green is the state of Connecticut. That red area is where the property on Brainard Road is. And you can see it abuts Oakwood, Marshfield Road. And according to the appraisal, if access from either Oakwood Road or White Bird Circle or Marshfield Road could be gained and introduce a new road into the area, the per acre value of the piece of property would be greatly increased as the majority of the property is well suited for development, has municipal utilities available at adjoining parcels. So this is something that is enjoyed by the town. I know, Dan, you've talked about knowing this property well.
Yes.
I've walked it too. There's trail set up and people maintain it. So it's something we'd like to keep. Now getting to the numbers, these are the three parcels. The purchase price, $2,250,000 for all three properties. And these are our appraisals, based on our appraisals from Russ Appraisal Services. Hathaway Farms was valued at $1,595,000. Azawagachi Hills, $575,000. Brainard Road at $125,000. And he indicated obviously if you do put a road to connect that into a very developable property, that would go up quite a bit. So the subtotal of the appraisals or the total of all the appraisals is $2,295,000. Before we get into funding options, any questions on the properties we've looked at or talked about so far? I know we've talked about this in executive session, but now we're making everything public. The appraisals will be public after tonight and available for people to see. There'll be copies in the clerk's office and so forth. Any questions on those?
I'd like to go back to the issue of intent. And even though it's not specifically stated that it must be preserved, is there anything that we can go on based on the, both of the owner's statement that it was for, it was for preservation?
That was something that would have to be, and I could probably defer to Attorney Block or Attorney Cicely on that, probably have to be litigated. But here again, too, the property could, the concern with like Azawagachi Hills, the property could still be foreclosed on and the town would no longer have access to it. So whether or not they're maintained as open space, even if that's the case, we could lose our access to them if they're foreclosed on because they were put up for collateral. But I don't know, Attorney Blocker, do you have a, wanna? You have to come up here a minute. This is Amanda Cicely, Special Counsel for this project.
The town wouldn't have any ability to do anything about that. If anyone would, it would be the Attorney General's Office. So we wouldn't have any control over what could or couldn't be done in that area. And so far, there's been no finding that anything improper was done. So at this point, the only way to really preserve these trails and this property for future use is to purchase it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Does Ann have a question at all? Not Ann, Chakela.
Do you want to switch back to the computer?
Yeah.
Any questions, Ann? Because we switch back to you. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, for, for development, that's a good question. As of right now, basically that northern tip of the lakefront area could be developed. And that's being held out. As you come in from, if you could go back to that picture for Hathaway Farms, Kevin?
Yes.
No.
Keep going down.
Okay, if you look at this, if you came in, according to the appraisal from Scott Road, because that opening there right now that they have cut off, that the property is not wide enough for a public road. So if you put a private road, you could get up to probably 30 single-family dwelling units onto the northwest, west area of that. But as you get down towards that area where the Hathaway family would get that little cut out, it becomes a lot more wetlands. Topography is very difficult because they have the gravel banks and so forth. So they, the appraisal said that you could not have any extensive development into the eastern, once you get into that southeastern area, except for what's on the lake because access in through Hathaway, through Heritage Road would be difficult because Gary, that road is already, I believe, our planning director is here. Gary, that road is already about as far as it can go, as far as, it couldn't be extended.
Not without great difficulty.
Yeah, not without, as he said, not without great difficulty as far as extending that. So he said the only developable part would be single-family dwelling units in the, you know, sort of as you're going into, up in a northwest direction, past where the Hathaway property would be, that they would maintain, Hathaway family maintain. And as far as extensive, they talked about large-scale development there. He said it didn't, would not support that in there because of the topography, no accessibility to sewage or water at this point in time, and the possibility that if you built something any extent in there, as time goes on, it would, with septic and so forth like that, there's a likelihood it could pollute Patagonia Lake. So this would preserve, what you don't see in the X's would be preserved. There are some nice hiking areas in there. We'd have very limited waterfront and sort of that little inlet just above the, you know, the lakefront area where the inlet is in there. But we would have some nice property for people to walk and hike and so forth like that. Ann.
Kevin, where are the access points for that hiking?
The access point for that right now, if we purchase it, would just be on, off of Scott Road. The appraisal concluded there wouldn't be any off of Hathaway Road coming in because of the, you know, the family that have that area. And there wouldn't be any access because right now there can't be any access coming in from Heritage because we would not own that.
And the plan is to have a conservation easement on that parcel?
If the town purchases, there'd be a conservation easement placed on everything to make sure in perpetuity, it would be open space on the properties that we would own.
Yeah.
Yes, Ann. My thoughts would be, it would be something that we would preserve as open space because Hathaway Farms has been designated, you know, identified as the number one place for open space. Azawagachi Hills, you can't develop it up there. You know, it'd be extremely, extremely difficult to do that. And Brainard Road right now is enjoyed by several communities and residents as a hiking trail. And the, the booklet we have today on the appraisal shows some of those trails a lot more in detail. So the intent would be to keep it all for open space and not development. Okay. Any other questions before we move on to the funding part? Okay, we did that. Right now, here's the purchase price. One of the, as you'll see when we get to the resolution in a little bit, one of the things is the $400,000 deep grant currently being held by the East Lime Land Trust. And that must be able to be transferred to the town of East Lime in order for this to move forward. So we've been told that that should not be a problem, but we have to make sure of that. We have open space fund balance of $220,000. Actually, it's a few dollars more than that. I think it's 222 or something like that. So we have a little bit there. Next picture. And here's some of the options that we, Kevin and I have spent a lot of time over the last few days. And one of the reasons why we're looking before we actually start moving forward with ways, because every time we call bond counsel now to talk to them, it's not a free call. So we're, we want to make sure as we move forward. We have over the last couple of days done that. We could take the money from the general fund, the undesignated fund balance, and just say, let's grab one point, whatever we would need, million dollars. Immediate impact to, on a sudden, have an immediate impact to the unassigned fund balance, undesignated fund balance. And potential, more like a certain, it would adversely affect the town's credit rating and bonding come next year. Option two, borrow from the general fund, unassigned, undesignated fund balance. Short-term impact at year end. But here again, and we replenish the money after 2024 closes in fiscal year 2025. But that would mean we'd be a little shorter, much shorter on our fund balance at the end of the year, which potentially could affect the credit rating. Number three, it's a short-term note. Basically, take a short-term note out with one of the local banks. We've done, we've researched that. Kevin's gonna talk about this in detail here in just a minute. And then pay it back next year. We do bonding in one store because that would save some money and so forth like that. Option four is to pay out of bonded CNR and replenish next year. Town will lose some interest income, but save expenses. Next one, Kevin? Option four, pay for the purchase out of bond fund or CNR and reimburse the fund next year when bonds are issued. The town already expects to issue bonds next year. We do it every year so we can realize savings by waiting. And this does not impact the general fund and the undesignated fund balance. Next slide. And now the Wizard of the Accounts will talk.
All right. Is this on? This is on. All right, so we have the, just to break down the, the cost of the land, the properties. So the purchase price, 2.25 million. And I'm estimating, so we're start, we're trying to compile these numbers. These are all estimates. But I'm imagining, just a best guess was about 100,000 of various expenses between bond counsel, the two attorneys sitting behind me here. I'm not quite sure about closing costs. We're looking into that, but I figured, you know, these are large sums of money. So I imagine 15,000 was appropriate. And then just various other costs. We have two current funding sources we know. There's a deep grant for about $400,000 that we're looking into seeing if it's transferable. We were told it's transferable. And then like, like we said, I was thinking about 200,000 of open space. I believe there was 222,000 available. So I figure we could keep, you know, 10% of it in there to try building that up throughout the year. So we would need roughly about 1.75 million to close the gap there. So.
Before you leave that, I think you just said, closing you expect to be 15,000, but this is 45,000.
Did you say 15 maybe?
I'm sorry, what says 45,000?
For closing costs, this says 45,000.
What he, I, I remember Kevin, Kevin was saying he figured 15 per property.
15 per property.
Oh.
So that's why I came out to 45.
Yeah, so those three properties, 15. So, so those could be, those numbers could be way off. They probably are, but I just figured we'd have a little cushion there.
Bill, if he and I close our eyes now, we see numbers right now.
So.
I understand.
So like I said, so we're, we're looking to try to find funding for about 1.75 million. So just doing a little calculation of, okay, if we took, you know, so we have a fund balance. We have some cash. If we took, if we spent the cash and then replenished ourselves in a year, what would this look like? So I kind of did a little opportunity cost analysis here and said, okay, if we pulled the 1.75 million out of cash, right, almost like a loan to ourselves for, you know, the 11 and a half months, we invest roughly 66 to 70% of our funds. You know, we have working capital. So I figured, you know, all in all, I think we would lose if we did cash. We'd lose about $57,000 of interest income. However, on the flip side, if, if we didn't take the cash and we said we wanted a loan, I've been calling around to local banks trying to find a price. The only bank to give me a price today was Chelsea Groton. It came in at 6:30 and I didn't update this. But she said seven and a half is a little high. So she was figuring about six and a half to 6.75% at the moment. So, so while this is a little high, it's, it's right in the ballpark there. You know, all it takes is one Fed rate hike and we're right there. So I think this is a good guidance. And what this is saying is if we take out a loan or a short-term note for those, that period of time, we're gonna pay in about 11,000 a month in interest versus losing about 50, what was it, like 6,000 a month in interest. So it kind of behooves us, just looking at these two numbers only, in their little silos, it behooves us to use our cash as opposed to taking out a more expensive loan. Right? Anything you want to add, Kevin?
Yeah, yeah. No, here again, and so basically we would, by basically borrowing money from ourselves, we would save roughly about $72,000 over going out to bond. Outgoing for the short-term note because instead of paying 131 to 50 roughly, we would lose, you know, we're still gonna lose the 57, but the difference between 131 to 50 and 57 is about 72. 72 or something like that, $1,000. So it comes out better that way. So here again, I, I mean, we're gonna continue. The plan is right now, if the resolution passes tonight, we're gonna still continue to work on this. I'm gonna go to Board of Finance on the 13th of next month and talk to them. And, you know, again, that won't be any decisions, but we'll have a much better idea of where things stand now. But we do have a couple of options. This one minimizes the impact to the taxpayers. And we're not taking any notes out that we're paying interest on this year. We're taking money we already have and then we'll pay ourselves back. Correct, Kevin?
Correct.
Okay.
So I think I'm gonna turn it back over to?
Right. Any questions on that before?
Yes.
Dan.
So on the scenario where we use our own money and don't borrow, how does that impact our, our bond rating?
Okay, Kevin, how's the answer for that?
Are you talking about option four?
Yes.
Well, yeah, would option four apply to the, to the, using our own money as opposed?
So option four is kind of the one I liked the best. So option four, I'll explain it. Instead of taking the money out of the general fund to borrow, you know, the town has multiple funds. So two of the funds, so those are two separate funds, the bonded fund and the CNR, which stands for capital nonrecurring, essentially cash capital, right? The idea being we can have like, almost like a short-term payable, right? Because it's within a 12-month timeframe on the books, on the balance sheet of the bond fund. So there'd be a due-to, due-from used between the general fund and the bond fund. So the general fund will be owed 1.7 million roughly from the bond fund. When we take out bonds next year, those bonds will replenish that due-to, due-from and satisfy that payable. Does that make sense? So we're not using general fund, fund balance. We're using cash from the general fund, like a loan essentially, from one fund to the another.
But you're not reducing the fund balance.
Correct.
So you don't change that ratio and it doesn't affect our bond.
Yeah, it does. It maintains that undesignated fund balance where we've gotten into over the last several years. And that was some, I, I think, you know, the options one and two, you know, just the taking it. Now, I wasn't, and borrowing from the undesignated fund balance agreed. That has an, you know, tough, tough situation.
Implications beyond.
Yeah, and the short-term notes, I mean.
That's not a bad one. That's not a bad one either.
No, but I, I like the, but, you know, but that's where we would go, so.
Kevin, could you go over the, the terms of the short-term note? In terms of timeframe and paying back?
So a short-term, the short-term note, like this would be a, otherwise known as a bond anticipation note essentially, right? So we would not be paying principal on this note. It would be strictly interest. And then that note, the entirety of it is due at the end of the term, which would coincide with our bonding next year. So every, you know, so we took out this year, we took out, I think, $4 million roughly in bonds. But we also rolled an additional, I think, 6 million, give or take, in bond anticipation notes. So this would roll into that and then we bonded the entirety of that next year. Right, so this is, I mean, we, we do this every year. So this would just be taken.
That's option four, right?
Well, that's, that is option three, by taking out another note, right? So we'd have to, we'd have to pay that 130,000 roughly in interest, you know, and, and it would be a little more expensive for that option because we'd have to get bond counsel involved with more paperwork and stuff like that. But so those are the differences really. It's using our cash and losing some interest income or taking out a note, maintaining our cash balance, but we, we're paying more in interest. So it's a little balancing act. So.
Okay.
I haven't heard from, did Ann?
Yeah. Want me to go back there? Try that. There's Ann.
Any questions, Ann? So. Well, we, we actually during this current, if we, if we do that short-term loan to ourselves... Well, we actually done this current, if we, if we do that short-term loan to ourselves, none at all. But if we went forward and rolled it into a bond for next year, Kevin estimated over a 15-year period, it would be about 1/10 of a mil per year, as far as across if we did a 15-year note. Is that correct, Kevin?
So I can run a calculation. So if, say we bonded 1.75 million over 15 years, the principal would be about, what, 125,000 a year? So 125,000 a year, and then say 75,000 in interest a year. So maybe the payment's 200 or 225, depending on the interest rate. A mil is $3 million of taxable interest. So it's like.
Less than a tenth, less than a tenth of a mil.
Hundreds of a mil, under a quarter of a mil impact annually with the debt, because it's rolling into debt service. So we're going to be paying it off over 15 years. So I'll get a, I'll get an amortization schedule, and then I'll shoot that off to you guys.
And the version where we pay ourselves is about half that.
Yeah.
Right.
The downside for option four?
The downside for option four? I couldn't really hear.
We could, Ann, could you speak up just a little bit? It's tough to hear you there.
So we have the bonded capital fund, right, bonded projects fund. It has, it's got a fund balance because all of the projects are not all expended, right? However, we're not using prior bonded money. We're just kind of floating and saying, hey, we have 2 million bucks that we need to borrow, or 1.75 million. We're going to hold it out in here until next August, and then we're going to pay ourselves back. It's just a, one fund is getting a loan essentially, a short-term loan, interest-free, unless we talk about that, but, an interest-free loan to the other fund. And then that fund will be replenished next August when we go to bond. So it'll show up on our, it'll be on the balance sheet as a liability from one fund to another.
Not a decrease in the.
No decrease to fund balance in the general fund, so the, as far as the fund balance is concerned, it lost $1.7 million of cash, and now it has an asset on the books saying due from bond fund, 1.75 million. So I tried to say that as least accounted as possible.
Yeah, it's good too, and, and, yeah, no, it's good. And here again, Kevin has been on the phone with our auditors today and so forth because we're making sure that everything, you know, here again, the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed because, you know, it is, and that was a good question you had too about, you know, yeah, this year is fine, nothing, but next year we bond, what's the impact going to be? And I think that's it. It's minimal considering what we're going to get. And as when I mentioned to the appraiser about the fact that we had an opportunity not only to get Hathaway and Osagachi, but the Brainerd Road piece, he said, and to quote him, that is a win-win-win for the town, is what he said before he, and unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight. He had planned a trip away a long time ago for a week off, so he's, he will be available at any time future, any future meetings we have. Okay, others? Bill, you had your hand up?
Yes, this all assumes that we're going to be under contract for 2.25 million.
Yes.
Do we know that to be true? We're not currently under contract, so do we have some kind of statement agreement, or?
I'll let Attorney Block talk to that.
We've had informal discussions with the council to the land trust, and I reasonably believe that we can get a written contract together at 2.25 under favorable, under these terms and conditions. So I don't think we're talking about anything that is far-fetched. I think this can be a reality.
No, I'm not talking far-fetched. I'm just saying that this isn't necessarily an agreed-upon number, or it's agreed on.
No, but I don't anticipate we're going to go back with 2.25, and they're going to come up with another number I've got to come back to you with.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm saying, is that they're going to say, okay. And I think they understand the pain and suffering that it took even to get to this point, so to come back a second time is going to be, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one other question for Kevin Gervais. So Kevin, back to option four, and using the CNRE, any other effects to CNRE because of it? I mean, I know we have it, you know, mapped out, not everything is used at all at one time, but what, what does that do to that account?
So, is this, okay, this is on. I can't hear myself, so, okay, so it will affect CNR, it'll make that, that fund negative for that particular year end. But S and P and Moody's really only care about that general fund fund balance.
Okay.
So one fund's negative for, for 11 months, and that bond hits, it's back to being positive fund balance.
Okay.
So as long as it's not the general fund.
All right.
Yeah, kind of, yeah, they don't look at the whole picture.
Okay. And you've had those conversations?
So I've talked to our external accountant, our auditor, our bond counsel, and our financial advisor multiple times in the last, last couple of days.
There's, yeah.
This has been, this has been through all the, through the wringer.
I've gotten to talk, we've gotten to deal with bond counsel and auditors over the last two days more than we have in the last year and a half, so it's, but it's, again, it's been, it's very, what it has is it's shown, we've exploring, and they helped too come up with options to minimize the impact now and moving forward too. It's, it's been a really healthy discussion we've had with them too. All right, any question? Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to ask my question, I guess, kind of in a different way. In the timeline that you put together, starting from September 12th going through October 17th, where does the actual person, or the contract come in?
The contract would come in, basically, I would sign it as the resolution would say tonight, basically after everything is done. I mean, I can enter into the contract, Mark, I would sign that after the town votes and everything else like that, correct? Well, I'll let you cover that.
If you were to, by resolution, authorize the first selectmen to sign a contract at this price on, under agreeable terms with the land trust, we could sign a contract immediately to tie up the land trust to the contract, but it would be subject to all of the items that you would put within the resolution, and that's going to be the Board of Finance approval, and the land, the grant being available, all of those would be in the contract. If any of those were to fail, then we would not have an obligation to purchase.
And the clean title and all that.
Yeah, clean title.
And clean, most of all, clean title.
And you have a copy of the resolution, it covers that, you know, current tax, has to be current taxes and so forth like that. And moving on to the timeline, yep, there we go. Under eight dash 24, the, has to go before the planning commission for purchase of property because of the fact, has to be consistent with the plan of conservation and development. We did, there was a letter sent to the Board of Selectmen over two years ago regarding Hathaway Farms, but we, obviously, we want a new one for that, as well as the Osagachi Hills and, and Brainerd Road piece too, so we want to do that. The 13th, I'll be presenting basically this to the Board of Finance, we'll have better numbers, or have a much more concrete decision, or where we're going with the financing at that point in time. So no action at that, just here again, further information. On the 20, and here again, once, someone was concerned that, well, once I sign the contract, we've started the timeline. No, because I signed a contract, if I, if you authorized me to sign it, I've just signed that. We're not obligating anything at this point in time because it takes a whole lot of other things that take place before that happens. So I figured that September 20th, we would set a public hearing for the 27th, which is, you know, it's the last Wednesday of the month, it's a good month because there's, except for Water and Street, there's usually not any meetings. So set a public hearing for that evening. And here again, these are tentative, September 12th might slide to the 19th, correct, Gary? Because planning might slide their meeting to the 19th, so, but we'll still have that approval that we need. And then the public, Board of Selectmen, public hearing, go ahead, Kevin. October 4th is when we would actually request the appropriation. That's when the timeline starts moving. And then I've talked to Denise about that. They will hold a Board of Finance meeting on the 5th, the day after we set the, for referendum by ballot, if BOF proves it, they'll meet on the 5th, and if they do it, the ballot will be on the 17th. I've talked to the registrars, I've talked to the town clerks. The 17th is a doable day, it's three weeks before the general election. And as they pointed out in 2020, they had to, during that massive absentee ballots and everything, during a presidential election year, they had to do a, they had to do a referendum in October, so they said it won't be that big of a difficult, it won't be difficult at all. And this isn't where we would have a town meeting that would adjourn to referendum, this is, we'll go straight to referendum. But this covers it all. And here again, if somebody wanted us to have a set, we could have another public hearing if someone requests, but that's the timeline for right now. This cross, this covers all the requisites for getting all the approvals we would need to move forward and go to the town for a vote.
And the, the advantage of October 17th, if we wait until Election Day?
Okay, Election Day is, you've already got the municipal ballot. You've already got the charter revision. We don't want people, you know, just, it was, it was just figured this is much cleaner, much easier to deal with, and, you know, more manageable.
Okay.
Because, you know, here again, some people forget to vote on this or something like, because you're going to get box fatigue as you're going through those little dots. That's why.
Okay.
That was a good question, because we thought the same thing at the time. And that was also a recommendation by the powers that handle the elections in town.
Again, I just look at the cost of the election.
Yeah, and here again, that's not something we're too concerned about. It's about 9,000, but, you know, it's something that we want to be sure.
And is that, Kevin, is that?
That would be the other expenses. Yep, that, yes, yeah.
Other expenses that you listed.
Yeah, here again, there's resources to do this. We wouldn't be doing it if, you know, if that were the case. Oh, Ann.
Let me get back to Ann here.
Yes, Ann? We're going to turn it up a little bit for.
You're following up, Ann.
Yeah.
Try here.
The one on the right.
Here again, we, there was discussions on other properties, and this is the one that was arrived at. I mean, here again, that was still, you know, based on, you know, we did have discuss, we did have discussions with them on other costs and other prices, and this was the one that everyone felt comfortable moving forward with, that would be accepted. Through, through, through our attorney to their attorney. Okay. Anything else?
So really, the only group that we're.
Mark has something, do you want to say something, Mark? Okay, present.
The only group entity that we are negotiating with is the land trust.
We are negotiating through attorney with the land trust, because the land trust is the one that owns the property.
Okay, and that includes all three pieces?
That includes all three pieces because they still own them. I mean, here again, someone has a lien on those because, you know, or they've been placed up for collateral, but they are still the owner of the properties, all the properties. Okay.
All right.
Okay, Mark, you want to? Okay, before, before, Ann, you get to read this law resolution.
I'm just looking at it.
Okay, um, uh, let me see. I had a copy of it, I think I have a copy right there.
Yes, here you go. Yeah.
When we did this, we, we forgot to put in the planning commission, so. Right, whereas at the top here, Mark, I think it'd be a good place, approval by the town.
I think at the end, it says, oh, this is your.
Yeah, this is the updated copy. This is the one you gave me.
Send it to approval of Board of Finance, Planning Commission finding that it's consistent with the POC.
Okay, okay, number two would be, any such purchase, the subject shall be subject to the approval of the Board of Finance. The Board of, the Planning Commission finding it is consistent with the plan of conservation and development, and all necessary approvals at a town referendum. Does that sound good, Mark? Good.
I'll wait till you. Okay. Thank you, Kevin. That was very helpful. Okay.
Okay, yeah, it's a resolution.
Okay. Resolution for first selectmen to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with the East Lime Land Trust Incorporated. Whereas, the town of East Lime has an opportunity to acquire property known as the Hathaway Farm parcel, the Osagachi Hills parcel, and the Brainerd Road parcel from the East Lime Land Trust Incorporated. And whereas the charter of the town of East Lime grants the power to the Board of Selectmen to acquire land subject to approval at a town referendum and approval of financing from the Board of Finance. And whereas the Board of Selectmen, in consultation with special town council and evaluation by an independent appraiser, have determined that the acquisition of the property known as the Hathaway Farm parcel, the Osagachi Hills parcel, and the Brainerd Road parcel from the East Lime Land Trust Incorporated is necessary to preserve the property as open space and to preserve the town's trail system, and that the terms of the purchase are fair and reasonable. And now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Selectmen of the town of East Lime. One, the town of East Lime acting by its first selectmen execute a purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of certain property known as Hathaway Farms parcel, map 35, lot 33.
23.
Oh, 23. Osagachi Hills parcels, map 21.2, lot 22, map 21.2, lot 45, map 26, lot 5, map 26, lot 6-1, map 26, lot 6-2, and a 15.24 acre conservation easement from Mount Tabor LLC, and Brainerd Road parcel, map 7.4, lot 22, collectively the properties, from the East Lime Land Trust Incorporated for the purchase price of $2,250,000. Which purchase and sale agreement shall contain the following conditions. A, the purchase is contingent upon the seller being able to assign $400,000 grant from deep to the town of East Lime. B, confirmation from buyer's title company that the lost deed affidavit slash replacement deed is valid, and the East Lime Land Trust Incorporated holds valid title to the properties. C, title must be free and clear, except for conservation restrictions. Releases to be provided for all mortgages and other encumbrances, including but not limited to any land swap agreements, reversion rights, et cetera, whether said encumbrances are recorded or unrecorded. D, taxes to be brought current on the properties on or before the closing date. And E, such other provisions that the first selectmen, with the advice of special council, deems necessary to protect the interests of the town of East Lime. Two, any such purchase and sale agreement shall be subject to the approval of the Board of Finance and the Planning Commission finding it's consistent with the plan of conservation and development, and all necessary approvals at a town referendum. And three, lastly, that the first selectmen be authorized to close on the purchase of the property subject to the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale agreement, as approved by the Board of Finance and at a town referendum.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ann just said aye, just saw that. Okay. Enaise, sentence passed unanimously. That concludes the presentation here. Any public comment? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ann, sir, a second.
Second.
Seconded by Bill, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, and we are adjourned. Thank you.